With that, the public management program requires two days every other month, usually on a Friday and a Saturday, plus advanced preparation for readings and study, as well as post-class work. So I can assure you that in the six classes that that Thai Hammer has has managed to get through on strategic planning and management, education, and public engagement, communication, organizational innovation, fundamentals of new public management, leadership and management, managing in crises, emergencies, and disasters. Boy, is that timely. And we're all we're all feeling that one. Those are courses which are taught by some of the best practitioners and professionals on our faculty, many of whom have been with us for the full 10 years that we've developed this program. It's certified in 39 states in the country, and I'm delighted that you'll let me give you a little bit of a commercial as I as I introduce Ty as our as our most recent certified public manager. I'm sure that at some point you're going to be able to benefit from his his courses, because the last course that the students take is called the capstone. And we encourage them to look at their community, work with the professional leaders like John Brennan and Jeff Wilson or others who can be a supervisor for their project, and to do a a project in the community, solve a problem, develop an issue that can actually return a benefit to you. Ty's Ty's project deals with bicycle-friendly communities for developing the developing Fort Morgan as a as a bike as a bike-friendly community. That's an important thing in all of our communities. Everyone is trying to do a better job of that and develop healthier communities as a result. So we want to show our appreciation to him and acknowledge him for the work that he's done as he joins the rest of the certified public management graduates that we've had at the School of Public Affairs. I won't go into his capstone, because I think at some point he may brief all of you on it. But I can tell you, I've read it. I know John Brennan has read it. And it's one of our more outstanding and easily what what it what I appreciated the most is that it communicates in a very direct way. It's one of the it's one of the capstones that really tells a good story and really really sets a framework for you as policymakers in your community to to act on how a bicycle-friendly community can be developed. So we're pretty proud of his work. We hope you'll be proud of his work. And we wish Thai Hammer all the best. So I want to congratulate him on his graduation. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the program. But but I want to thank the city of Fort Morgan for its support and leadership in helping develop your staff and your employees, because it's a it's a team that operates in our communities that gets the best results. And we want to be on the side of developing the Thai Hammer so that they do a good job for you. So thank you for having me. I very much appreciate it. And now I can say I finally went to a Zoom City Council meeting.
Thanks, Randy.
Were able to attend. So good for you, Ty. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
Are these courses? You do the two days every other week?
Every other month.
Every other month. So are there elevated or next level courses that you take?
We don't. We haven't leveled it as such. I know what you're talking about. We are experiencing a little bit with experimenting with CPM with Adams County. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit us hard, but we we have always had a relationship with a number of our communities where we at least have one or two of their senior mid-level staff that that want to develop their skills and knowledge. So a number of those communities have continuing relations, and we've developed a number of their executive staff that are still with the cities and the at the at the senior department levels. But in the Adams County case, we're doing a cohort for the entire 2022 members, senior staff, all in one one class. So John may may realize how difficult that would be. But so we do. We do deliver the program in a number of ways, but we don't distinguish levels up. But we do have other programs that that serve other needs, a one-week leadership program that's designed for both professionals and elected officials that meets once a year. It's called our community leadership Rocky Mountain Leadership Program. So we have a number of those, and I hope your community avails themselves of them, because we like to we like to develop different emphases in different professional leadership programs. So you can kind of pick different ones that serve different purposes.
Okay. That answered my question.
That was probably a long answer, but I do. I do enjoy making the commercial, and we we do enjoy the relationship we've had with Fort Morgan. I can tell you that.
So you really don't have like an associate, it's a bachelor, it's a master, it's a PhD?
No, no, that's our academic program. What I'm talking about is our professional education program, our certificates in environment and law and forth, those kinds of things. But our academic program is a master's degree program. We have a we have a whole series of specializations you can take. I teach a course in local government. I teach a course in economic development, which are very close to the kinds of issues and things that we do in our CPM program, where we deal with leadership and skills and knowledge.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Hope to come out to see you in Fort Morgan when you are all back in City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Randy.
Sammy.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ty. You did a good job.
That's great.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation on a change order for contract administration services for the Fieldhouse Project. Mr. Brown?
All right. Thank you all. Good evening. What you have in your packet tonight for consideration is a change order with our current architecture team and design team for construction administration services for the Fieldhouse Project. I've tried to briefly describe what that looks like in the memo that's in your packet. As you know, this is a project of magnitude. And typically, with projects of this size, you'll get numerous requests for design information and project submittals that you need to review and and approve or or get changed and then approved. We've got shopings that will review construction activities on site. Our folks will come out to the project several times and make sure the project is on schedule and on task. And then they also will assist us with pay applications, any change order requests that we might get throughout the project, and just other construction-related information as as we get this thing built. As you know, this is a 10-month construction project. And I'll give you a little more information on where we're at with the project here in a few minutes. But we could bid this out to other companies, but it really just makes sense to have the design team that's gone through the whole process do this work for us. They've got intimate knowledge of the project and all of the elements. And so it just to bring somebody else up to speed at this point would be difficult, time-consuming, and cost more money, quite frankly. So we did get a an estimate to provide these services at $319,000. I'm asking approval to spend up to 330,000. This would allow if we run into something that's unforeseen during construction. I don't anticipate that, but it does give me a little wiggle room, so I don't have to come back and ask for additional dollars if we do run into some. But I'll hold Hillary and her team to the fire and make sure we don't spend over that that 319 unless it's something really significant. This amount would be paid out of the construction funds, the $10 million that we have appropriated for this project. A quick update on where the project's at. We're very close to having the contract finalized with GH Phipps. This is our general contractor, construction manager. We have a guaranteed maximum price from them that is well under $10 million. I can report to this group. We're at about with all of the bonding and all of the other things that go into projects, we're at 8.7 million. The actual construction of the project is just right at 8.1 million. So we're pretty excited about that. We do have the money to take care of this contract item. You're going to see a couple of additional contracts in your packet next week for special inspections. This is to bring engineers and and other folks on board to test concrete and steel and look at welds and bolts and these things. And then we'll also be hiring a lead commissioning agent to make sure that we get all of the lead certifications in place for this building. It does have to be lead certified. But even with all of that, and if I've estimated my math correctly, we are well under $10 million. And we should be able to get most all, if not all, of the fixtures, furnishings, and equipment for the $10 million. So we'll have a turnkey open-the-door project for under $10 million. I'm just sure of it.
What what are your thoughts or estimates on what we're going to be spending for the lead services, the special construction services, and for this current one that we're doing for administrative services?
Yeah. So the contract administration, I really think we'll stick to that 300 and we'll all round to 320,000. I think we'll be there with that. The the lead commissioning agent, I have an estimate of 75,000 for that. I hope that's high. I've tried to estimate high on that. I'm hoping the special inspections will come in at that same price at 75,000. And that leaves us in my budget. I have two contingency line items. GH Phipps has given us a contention contingency of right at 230,000. I also budgeted a construction contingency on my side at just over 400,000. So I have $600,000 in construction contingencies. And even with all of that, I think we still have about $400,000 left for fixtures, furnishings, and equipment.
I have a question. Well, first of all, this is our I've watched all this up to this. And I I just don't like when the first thing you do is a change order. So how is this changed? Was this unforeseen? And why would it be? And you have in here, it's typical to of this size to do this. Why? Why is that? Why wasn't that brought forward to begin with?
No, it's a good question, Lynn. And it's the term that I think you're you're referring to the term change order.
Yeah.
We use that because because we have a current contract with RS and H. That's why it's a change order. It's not because we didn't foresee this coming. It's just we we didn't know exactly what the amount would be until we had the actual construction amount in place, which we do now. But we use the term change order only because of an existing contract. We could certainly bid this out and get bids from other engineering firms or architectural firms to provide this service. And we would be calling it a change order. Then it would just simply be a contract with a firm. And it's quite possible would be this firm that we would be contracting.
And I agree to do it with the same one. That makes total sense. But is it to? I guess I just need further information.
Sure.
To me, it sounds like the contractor is working with the design. And so the contractor is going to have it will have questions on looking at the designs and then actually producing it. Is that it?
No, it's really more about submitting specific items related to construction. We have to give approvals to what the to make sure that the bolts are the right bolts, and that the steel is the right steel, and that the flooring is the right flooring. And so they submit all of these documents and all of this information, and it's quite voluminous. And so the design team will read through all of that documentation, make sure what they're submitting is what was specified in the design for construction, and that it's approved to be installed into the building.
That seems to me like if they knew this, this is typical, they would offer to do that for a price that would be incorporated in that you don't have to come back and ask for more money.
Yeah.
I'm not connecting the dots. I mean.
And I and I think what's difficult about that, and to try to help you understand, is typically, these prices are based on the the value of the project. And we quite simply didn't know what the value of the project was until we got it bid out to the contractor. So we know we have an 8.1 million or construction project. And so the value to the construction administration is a percentage of that. And that's how you come up with these numbers. So you just simply can't come up with a dollar figure until you've gone through the entire design process and come up with a cost of the project. And then they're able to estimate what that cost is.
Just make sure the end result doesn't go over 10, because that's what we've told everybody. And boy, change order, I'll just give you a warning, change orders, I don't like them. Sometimes they are necessary, but sometimes some of that is kind of built in. They expect to get, you know, a little bit more here, a little bit more there, depending on the, you know, the firm. I know. I know that goes on all the time. And so we'll rely on you and your expertise to keep everything good.
Well, I went back and reviewed, and I sat in on the initial when when we all met with RS and H. We had to grant stuff. And in order to get it in for what the grant funding that we had, we had to take out the lead and inspections. We took, I believe, that we also couldn't include this portion of it. So in reviewing what we went through that meeting to try and bring that back, and I believe Hillary, you were there, and a couple of others, and yeah, myself, Steve, and Brent. So I know that some of these were taken out so that we could bring them back in, and we would have to go out and and do a request for for getting these services. So some of that's where where this was at. And I had written on here the lead and that. And that's what made me go back and look at my my stuff. So I understand what you're saying, that the change order verbiage sounds evil and wicked, but that's not really, as Steve stated, it's really not a change order. It's an addition to a contract that we already have. So it changes that contract. In essence, it is a change order. To me, a change order is, we're doing this. Well, you know, we didn't order enough steel, and we have to have more steel now, so that that cost is going to be different. So.
And that goes on quite often. So I'm just leery of it, and just being out front, you know, the way I feel about it. So your explanation sounds good, Steve. Trust you.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, Lynn. That's a great question.
And you know what? I just I'm upfront with how I feel, and I don't want to just say, okay, and then say, you know, afterwards, or have people say to me later, blah, 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 blah. And so, you know, I like to get my head right out front on some of this. So that's kind of why I I ask those questions, and not to be too terribly biggy. Of course, things happen, and I know that, too. So, okay, good. Good explanation. Got it.
Okay. There are any other questions for Steve or Hillary?
Yes, thanks to Steve and Hillary for keeping the ball rolling on this really critical project.
Mm-hmm.
Our pleasure. Really excited.
Yeah, that we're doing something.
Yeah, it's gonna be amazing.
And I can tell the group that it appears construction is going to start June 15. We'll be digging a hole in the ground for the foundation. So June 15.
Can't wait.
Okay. There's no other questions. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the change order for a contract for administration services for the Fieldhouse not to exceed $330,000.
Wow.
Do you second that, Kevin?
Yeah.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Six zero with Mr. Sashow not present. Thanks, Hillary.
Have a good evening. Good to see you guys in person. Bye.
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 Next is discussion and possible action on publishing the monthly city expenditures in the paper. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet was an email with a price quote on publishing the monthly bills in the Fort Morgan Times. I had requested that. And it basically, the estimate is about $3,000 per year to do that. It looks like it's probably about a half page. Generally, there will be months where it will be larger. So that's not like a firm price. It will be what it what it is, you know, how long it is each month, and it varies a fair amount. But so the other question that you may have is, Mr. Porter from the Times suggests or offers to publish it in the Fort Morgan Weekly, which is a weekly paper that they used to, I think, throw every to every house in town. Now are apparently putting in mailboxes, so they must have gotten a new permit. He said he's talking to miss talked to Miss Deal about that. And so that's another question. The council will have to decide if they want to publish it in the regular Fort Morgan Times or in the Fort Morgan Weekly.
The benefit being it reaches a lot more people on the Weekly.
John, can you remind me of the distribution of the paper? Is it additional counties, or it has a wider reach? Like, is it really critical for us to have our?
It became microphone to really hear you. I'm not sure what was in.
Let's try. Maybe my camera is involved on the second key in the opening hour.
Oh.
I'll ask my question in the chat.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Allison, it sounds like your volume is turned all the way up when you're talking to us. So not for sure if that's a setting or not.
Allison's question is, is it important to distribute our financials to anyone outside of Fort Morgan? That's an opinion question, I think. And we will continue to post them on our website as we do today. So they'll be available to anybody in the world.
It's just a it's just a matter of how many people you want to reach. It's in the most people want it to be in the paper. And so if you want a larger with no extra cost, it just reaches. There's a lot of people in town that don't subscribe to the paper that are in the city limits, and they would be able to get that, too. So I think would be Ben. And it's he's offering it free, so why not?
Offering it free? I thought it was about 20.
No, it's the extra, a lot extra distribution.
So is that the only place they'll publish it in, is in?
No, it's it's up to us. We can publish it in the Fort Morgan Weekly at the same cost as it would be in the Times, which leads me to believe it would normally be more expensive to put in the Weekly, but.
There's no like hidden fees with this, like like it's free for the first year, and the next year they're going to jack up the price, because
No.
it's a process we do.
No, I don't. I don't think I don't expect to sign any contracts.
No.
This is a, you know, we have an account where we publish legal notices pretty frequently in the Times. And this would just be another one. It's not going to be a long-term deal.
Okay. Thank you.
Done, and the county does it. So it's just transparency. People are asking.
There's there's no contract with this.
No.
Did you figure out how we're going to do the salaries just as a single line item?
I thought we agreed that.
It's the consensus from of the council at the last meeting.
Right.
I think that's good.
I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions? Roommate?
Let's try my audio now. Is it any better?
Let's guess.
All right. I just changed my microphone over. And yeah, Lynn, I think that makes a lot of sense, because a lot of people don't subscribe to the paper. So, yeah, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to think through the rationale, because I, yeah, no, it's mostly important just for Fort Morgan residents. So, cool. I'm fine with it to be in the Weekly.
Will be in the Weekly and published monthly.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on publishing monthly civic expenditures in the newspaper in the Weekly.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Allison Howe, second, or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on resolution extending the public health emergency declaration in the city of Fort Morgan. Mr. Nation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We just wanted to bring forth our the city's emergency declaration for an extension again. I want to be clear, we are not extending or changing anything at the state level. This is just the city's declaration. We want to have that in place. So if we do have the ability to obtain any type of federal funding or any relief mechanisms through that, that's what we've got in place. We've not exercised it for any other purpose at this time. So after the last meeting, that we were taking a little bit out of context, where people thought we were changing orders. And that's not at all what this is. This is our own declaration as a community. And all we're doing is looking to extend it another 30 days. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just clarified, because everybody went wild and said, how the city has no right. They can't make us wear masks and all that stuff.
Yeah, no, we haven't asked anybody to do anything.
No, this is strictly for funding purposes if funding becomes available.
Right.
We have this. We were not be eligible for the funding in the event it becomes eligible or we need it.
Absolutely.
Right now, we don't. So this is just a business as usual. It is not saying that we're extending declarations of stay-at-home.
Correct.
Or any of that for an extended period of time.
Ally does that.
Yeah.
That's Ally.
Hey, if you guys stay home and wear masks, then we won't have increased numbers.
I doubt that's gonna happen. Have you been to Walmart?
So just Ally, so just being the type of person I am and everything with it. So you're gonna have everybody stay home and wear masks until the end of the year when we get a vaccine, then?
I think what we're doing right now is pretty awesome to have. I think what we're doing right now is pretty awesome to have people who are most vulnerable stay home, and then for people who, to show respect to others when they're outside of their home, to wear a mask, to keep your spit to yourself. So I think there's, it's not and/or, it's being safe in a reasonable way. So I think you can be pro-business and pro-health at the same time.
That's not the way you presented it, though. You said, when everybody's staying home and wearing masks. And I consider myself among that group, and I wear a mask and gloves when I go out and everything else. But I don't think that we can say everybody has to stay home, otherwise you're saying, let's wait until we get a vaccination. So that's my professional opinion.
Then you'll have to come up with Prozac and all that stuff because we'll be so depressed. No, I, you know, it's, it, good common sense to be safe for yourself and others, absolutely.
Wash your hands and be polite.
Yeah. No, no dirty words either.
Better stay home then. Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to extend our public health emergency for the city of Fort Morgan for an additional thirty days.
Second.
Okay, I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lynn Deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign?
Our resolution carries unanimously.
And just on a side note of this, this, and this is just for the public, that this can be terminated at any time that we decide there's no need for it. So if it, it comes to a point where we don't need it, everything goes back to normal, we can dissolve it at any time. Next is consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The, tonight's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for April, and item B, approval of the minutes of the May 5th, 2020 City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution accepting.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda as it presented.
Again.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next on the agenda is public comment, audience participation for items not on the agenda.
I don't think we have anybody, Ron.
I'd like to bring up something. I kind of sent everybody an email about it and I got a note back from John and it sounds like the staff is working on it. But my point had been that I had noticed on TV that the city of Denver was working on plans to allow restaurants to expand out onto sidewalks and parking lots and maybe even streets, since when they reopen, there will be social distancing, then therefore they would have between a fourth and a third of what their normal capacity would be. And so they were going to allow them to expand outside, at least during the summer. And so they were starting to have policies and procedures in effect so that people could pre-apply so that everything would be set up when the okay comes down from the state. And I thought that it would be good for us to be working on something like that if indeed we all thought that that was something that would be applicable here in Fort Morgan as far as to RE to re.
I, I think it's a good, good move. I saw some of the same things where they were setting tables on, out in front of their side, on the sidewalks and, and actually in some of the parking areas on there, the amount of traffic we don't have on Main Street at times. I think, you know, that may go a long ways to look at helping some of our downtown businesses that are in dire need of, of assistance. So I'm with you on that, Kevin.
Yeah, I agree. I like that too.
I know we, we can't take.
In that or?
Go ahead. No, we can't. This is just discussion.
Yeah.
Not an agenda item, so there's no formal action can be, be taken, so.
Yeah, I think, just so everybody knows, John responded to Kevin, and this is something staff has already started to work on. So we're trying to get our ducks in a row as we wait for our health department to hand down some of their regulations that we have to live under. So we'll definitely try to stay ahead of this as much as we can.
Hey, Kevin, the state has their preliminary guidance that's circulated with local public health officials and that's going to be circulated with, like, restaurant leaders. And then when the governor's ready to push it out, that's when we would push it out. So it's definitely, the ball is rolling, but it just needs to be vetted with, with the industry first.
Good job, Kev. Thanks.
You know what? I haven't, I have a, someone made a suggestion and I don't know if this might, it's kind of, it's different, but I keep forgetting. I had a person say that this last spring, with the spring cleanup, that they couldn't get to all the stuff and so it was sitting out on the streets a lot, blowing all over, that I know that in the wintertime, they hide, they do contracts with people to help remove snow. And so there's, there's people around that would volunteer to help do that, pick up trash and take it to wherever the city would designate, so. Has any, has that ever been done before or is it against the rules or?
You know, Lynn, we, we struggle with spring cleanup every year, and so much of it has to do with the weather. It's not, it's not necessarily staff. It's, it's when do we get the first or that last snowstorm? When does things freeze the ground? And so we, we definitely struggle with that all the time. I think this year we experimented and we moved it up a week or two. And it seemed like it came together better this year than it has. I don't remember before in the past, I'd even receive phone calls about spring cleanup. And this year, I don't think I received any, so a lot of that is, you know, hit and miss. And to be honest, spring cleanup is something that we continually talk about because I think we'll probably see even more changes to spring cleanup if this waste energy facility moves forward. It changes the dynamic of what we want to do in the, when we clean up that stuff anyway. So I, we'll take the suggestion down and as we continue to be, you know, as public works and, and even my departments will continue to evaluate what seems to work best, but that's, that's a good suggestion and we'll.
Just to help staff and the city stay on top of it.
Yep.
Okay, I did my duty. I said, okay, I, I forgot.
Message received. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
I've got a question on April 2020, the publication report. There's two things in there to the city campus project, one for five thousand three thirty-two and another one for a hundred and fifteen. Is that, does that have anything to do with the field house or is that like the other half of the Center Point campus that we've seen before?
No, Brian, I'm going to guess those are both related to the field house specifically. We spent very, we spent some on the utilities building, which is under contract as well for design. I'd have to see specifically what the bill is to know exactly what that's for. But it, but most of the bills have been specifically for the field house because we spent very little on the utilities building side of that project.
Okay, when was the Hoffman for fifty-three hundred? Another one is RS and AG for one sixteen?
So Dave Hoffman is our cost estimator. He's the guy that was helping us determine what we thought the project was going to cost us when we got to construction. So that's, that was probably an estimate, a final estimate for the field house. The RS and H, I'm sure all of that or the lion's share of that was for the field house design.
Okay, I was just curious if it was for the field house or for the?
I have one, one more question. Is the extension of Beaver Street, is that part of the development of Center Point? Is that city doing that or was that a part of that, that grant?
No, it's not part of the grant at all. That's part of the original Center Point development subdivision. And so we're finally finishing. We just ran out of weather last year and couldn't get it finished last.
Yeah, I like that. I, I didn't know, I didn't know what that was specifically, but. Be great. I like it. I pass the town for getting around to go to breath.
Okay, anything else? Reports by officials and staff. Mr. Nation?
I'll open it up. I think maybe Steve had a few things and I'll check it.
Yep, just a couple of updates on paving projects. We've been out trying to, you know, this is the third year for Strictly for Streets. So of course, as things go, as soon as we peeled the asphalt off, it rained heavily for a couple of days, and that set us back quite a little bit. But it looks like we'll finish the first phase of that this week. For the most part, we'll get all the bottom lift of asphalt is on all of the Landmark Trailer Park subdivision over by Brian and then down by Brent. That's all done and they've been putting top lift on. So we should see the rest of that street be finished out, all of those streets be finished out this week. And we should see a bottom lift at the senior center parking lot as well. They have to go away for a couple of days to do something, and then they were trying to get back here next week to put the top lift off on this, at the senior center. So that parking lot will be finished hopefully mid-next week. And then they're going to go away for a while and do their I-76 work and their US-34 work and give us time to, for Brent's crews to get in town and get all the water and sewers fixed on the rest of the streets. Then they'll come back and finish that project late summer. So, but we, we at least got a good chunk of it out of the way early this year. Honestly, it was nice having school closed because we were able to get into a few areas that we probably wouldn't have. And so that's, that's been handy, but Strictly for Streets and the Senior Center, both going well and hopefully to have those wrapped up soon, so. I think that was it for me.
Either the other directors have anything? It looks like.
Good mid-posting update on the city manager position. I received an email yesterday from Lauren Kramer, CRW. Sorry.
I hear you.
We can hardly hear you, Susan.
Okay. Um. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Fairly, yeah.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to let you know, we had fourteen applications, eight qualified, three that had some qualifications and three not qualified. There have been several inquiries about the job and the next check-in will be in at the end of the month to just, just start discussing the next steps. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you said at the end of this month, Susan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And so why do we have the delay if we've got the applications down between the end of the month? What happens over the next two weeks?
It's been posted for thirty days. So we're, we're in the midpoint check-in right now. So we will wait until the thirty days are up and then take a look at all of the applications at that time.
Okay, now I got it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sarah, Ty, Jared, Steve, Jeannie? Mr. Wilson? Okay, you all had your chance. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's got a couple of bids out. Fort Morgan Humane Society roof replacement until 3:00 PM on May 21st. Lead Commissioning Authority Services until, for the field house project until 3:00 PM on May 22nd. And 2020, 2021 Field House Construction Special Inspection Services until 3:00 PM on May 26th. Under meetings, the, all city offices will be closed next Monday for the Memorial Day holiday. They're, most of them are pretty much closed as it is. The next city council regular meeting is scheduled for June 2nd at 6:00 PM. At this point, the time and location for that will, is to be determined. On one quick announcement, on news releases, the Fort Morgan High School graduation parade will be taking place on Saturday at 2:00 PM. It's expected to last about an hour. It's going to run from the area of the police department and stage possibly in the Center Point area, then head on west across Sherman Street on Beaver, all the way to City Park, then loop up north of the library, turn south on Main Street and go down to Railroad and disperse. So that will disrupt traffic somewhat, but I think a lot of people are excited about that procession. So hopefully it'll go well. That's all I've got.
Does that seem to work pretty good, Clint?
Yeah, all the, the feedback we've got from parents are very receptive of the parade route and appreciative of the city, working with the school district to kind of honor these seniors and kind of a united situation. So there's a lot of excitement. People, their kids are going to decorate their cars, vehicles, and we've been in Communication Health Department trying to make sure we abide by the rules, but I think it will be a great send-off to the class of 2020.
I'll go out, front yard and wave to them all.
Good. Well, congratulations to all the 2020 graduates. It's a milestone. Okay. Next on our agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that shall maybe subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, economic incentives. At this point, we will languish from here and go into our executive session.
Do we have a motion for that, Your Honor?
I just thought of that.
I have a quick question. Where do we have the link to go to executive session? You know, Nelson usually sent us a second link, but at least I didn't.
He sent it just yesterday. Check your email, Kev. It'll come from Nelson and it says executive session in there.
Yeah, see, all I see is the one that says, city council starts in one day.
Well, this would be just a straight email that he has and has a notation of executive session for this date.
Yeah, I don't see anything in mind that's not an executive.
Done Friday, city council executive session.
Hey, Nelson, can you, are you listening, Nelson? Can you forward that back to Kevin?
Oh, found it now.
I'm sure he is listening. I'll try and find it.
He found it.
Find it now.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, who seconded, Lynn?
Yeah.
And Lynn, second? And Lynn, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We will move into executive session. See you on the dark side, folks.
Okay.